Good afternoon, everyone. The technology issues still are working through with the Council Gaffey this time, but we are going to start the meeting if we could. Now, the first item would be the call to order and of course, a moment of silent reflection if we could. Thank you. Well, this is a city council meeting four thousand seven hundred and four. So it's an auspicious night for many of us that are retiring at the end of this and for those that have been re-elected or carried on, we wish you all the best. But till the end, we'll save our remarks till then. We'll start and I'll turn the meeting over to Ms. Defoe, the city clerk, to walk us through.
Through you, your worship. Item two is declarations of peculiary interest. Are there any declarations? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Item three is adoption of the minutes and there is a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of council of the corporation of the city of Stratford dated October eleventh be adopted as printed.
Council Ingram will move and seconded by councillor Burbak. Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed if any, and that is carried.
Item four is adoption of the addendum and there was no addendum to be adopted. So moving to item five, report of the committee of the whole in camera session. Item five point one at the October eleventh session under the municipal act as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered, and that was item three point one. City industrial land pricing policy two thousand and twenty-two annual review. And that was considered under the proposed for pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality or local board exemption. And there is a motion on the agenda that the industrial land prices policy E dot one dot two, as amended, be further amended as noted on the agenda.
Councillor Vassalakos and seconded by councillor BD. Discussion. Not all those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried.
Item five point two, this is just notification that the November fourteenth committee of the whole in camera session was canceled. Moving to item six, hearings of deputations and presentations, there are none scheduled. Going to item seven, orders of day. Item seven point one is a resolution regarding funding and support for via rail service. And there is a motion that the resolution, as noted on the agenda, be adopted.
Moved by councillor Burbak and seconded by councillor Vassalakos. Discussion. Councillor Burbak.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really glad to see this. I think more via rail service is really important for a lot of reasons. For tourism, for the environment, and just for allowing our city to be a little more connected with the bigger areas. When I looked read through the resolution, I just had one question. At the very end, it says of in increasing frequency reliability, ticket cost and speed of via rail service. So I just wasn't I was a little confused by ticket costs. Maybe ticket availability. I just didn't wasn't sure if we were asking for them to increase their prices along with everything else.
Mr. Foe.
Through your worship, the resolution was actually provided to the state of Stratford, so I would be happy to take it back, just confirm that wording. And if it should be something else, then we can administratively make that change. If it is that specific wording, then I could bring this back to a future meeting, just so that council is aware of what they would fully be adopting.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there anything further? If not, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, any? And that is carried.
Item seven point two is correspondence and it is a resignation from the energy and environment committee and there is a motion that the resignation of Patricia Osoco from the energy and environment committee be accepted.
Moved by councillor Ingram and seconded by councillor Burbak, that the resignation be accepted. Discussion. Councillor Henderson.
I'd like to thank her for her work on energy environment and sad to hear she leaving.
Thank you. Anyone else this time? All right, all those in favor? Opposed, any? And that's carried. Thank you.
Item seven point three is a resolution regarding the Brandt Street road widening and there's a staff recommendation that the council of the corporation of the city of Stratford accept part one, plan forty-four R dash six zero four one as public highway and dedicated as forming part of Brandt Street.
Moved by councillor Clifford, seconded by councillor Bunting. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, any? And that's carried.
Item seven point four is a resolution regarding the Dunn's Bridge Rehabilitation Consultant Services and there is a staff recommendation that the request for proposal RFP dash twenty twenty-two dash thirty-six for the Dunn's Bridge Rehabilitation Consultant Services project be awarded to BM Ross and Associates Limited for a total cost of a hundred eighty thousand two hundred and thirty-five hundred dollars, including HST, and that the mayor and city clerk or their respective delegates be authorized sign the contract agreement.
Moved by councillor Vassalakos and seconded by councillor Ingram. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried.
Item seven point five is a resolution regarding the line twenty-nine road widening and there's a staff recommendation of the corporation of the city of Stratford accept part three, plan forty-four R dash six zero three four as public highway and dedicated as forming part of line twenty-nine.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Vassalakos and seconded by councillor Burbak. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, any? And that's carried. Thank you.
Item seven point six is a resolution regarding the McCarthy Road Extension Tender Award and there is a staff recommendation that the tender T dash twenty twenty-two dash fifty-two for the McCarthy Road West Extension be awarded to Rubio's Farm Service Limited at a total tender price of a hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty-three cents, including HST. And that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates authorize sign the necessary contract agreement.
Moved by councillor Ritzma, seconded by councillor BD. Discussion. Councillor Henderson and councillor Clifford.
Do we have a timeline of when this is going to start?
Mr. Crinkler.
Yeah, through your worship, the plan is to start once the grounds are more solid, then it'll be easier for the heavy construction equipment to do the work. So, early January.
Councillor Clifford.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the a couple of questions. If it's going to be a gravel road and a temporary road, I was gonna ask the director, like, is it gonna be for like one year, three years, four years? My other question is, and I wanted, I wanted to say this for the last time, I grew up in the Gore Downey and all the, all the roads are gravel out there. So I, like, it's, it's, it's kind of hard with gravel. So is there any, any plan to put like, parent gravel over it if it is temporary road?
Mr. Crinkler.
Yeah, so your worship, the, the first question is the lease agreements for a two-year period. So the intent would be to have that for that duration and if then when that expires, we'll look at options at that point. In terms of how it is operated, maintained, we will be operating, maintain their, our best ability. The focus is trying to remove the heavy equipment vehicle off our local streets and onto this temporary road, providing an access point to a loan. So we will be maintained toward the best standard that we can with the, the equipment that we do have. And so in terms of gravel roads, there will be maintenance work done by our, our city staff and we do have a contract for a greater to minimize the the puddles and whatnot can be generated from such a road and urban environment.
Anything further? Councillor Vassalakos.
And I guess one of the reasons for, you know, doing this temporary road is to take some of those heavy trucks and some of that construction activity off of McCarthy. And so I'm really hoping that they could be encouraged to use this, especially since the bike lanes along McCarthy have been in continuously full of gravel and, and problematic to use because of the construction activity. So I, I am hoping there is a way that we can encourage the construction to use that road.
Thank you. All right, is there's anything further? All right, we have a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Opposed, any? And that's carried.
Item seven point seven is a resolution regarding a municipal access agreement and there is a staff recommendation that council authorized entering into the municipal access agreement with Zayo Canada Inc. for the purpose of granting permission to install, operate and maintain new underground telecommunication infrastructure within the road allowances for large enterprises within the city. And that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to execute the municipal access agreement on behalf of the city of Stratford.
Thank you. A mover? Councillor Clifford, a seconder councillor Ritzma. Discussion. Councillor Henderson.
Is this gonna be like white men where they're gonna have to dig up all the along the, you know, and run the wiring through the whole city?
Mr. Crinkler.
Through your worship, at this time, this provider has only one client in mind. There wouldn't be an extensive impact to ongoing construction from that matter. And going forward, their focus, from my understanding, is on, on larger entities. This agreement, just make sure that they go through us before completing such work.
Okay.
Anything further? All those in favor? Opposed, any? And that's carried.
Seven point eight is a resolution regarding proposed amendment to the procedural bylaw and there's a staff recommendation that section four point one of the procedural bylaw one forty dash two thousand and seven, as amended, be deleted and replaced with the following new section four point one, and that is four point one inaugural date, time. Following a regular municipal election, the inaugural meeting shall be held on the first Monday following November fifteenth of that year at seven PM in the council chamber or city hall or auditorium, or as otherwise determined by the clerk. And that the notice requirements for amendments to the procedural bylaw, as set out notice policy, be suspended.
Councillor Ingram and councillor BD moving in seconding. Discussion. Councillor Seven.
Sorry, just for clarification, the suspension is just for this item, is that correct? I understand that correctly?
Mr. Foe.
Through your worship, yes, that is correct. It is just specifically for this item.
Thank you.
Right. Anything further? All right, all those in favor? Opposed, any? And that's carried.
Item seven point nine is a resolution regarding the closed meeting investigation report and there is a staff recommendation that the closed meeting investigation report dated October twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two be received. That in response to the recommendations contained in the closed meeting investigation report, the following recommendations be referred to the new term of council. That regular and comprehensive training on the closed meeting exceptions and the types of situations to which the exceptions apply continue to be provided to both members of council and staff. That the inclusion of a brief closed meeting agenda item title, along with the section two thirty-nine exception, where necessary and if possible, continue to be provided in the resolution to adjourn into closed session. And in the resolution used for reporting out following a closed session, that the following additional recommendations be referred to the new term of council for consideration, that committee of the whole in camera sessions be chaired by the deputy mayor, that the deputy mayor be responsible for reporting out.
Thank you. Councillor Vassalakos, are you moving? Second or councillor Ingram. Discussion. Councillor Seven, councillor Gaffey, councillor Henderson.
Thank you. I'm just, just for clarification, for, for people watching, on the second portion, the, the additional recommendation regarding deputy mayor, I'm just wondering if staff could clarify for people watching the reason behind that? Thank you.
Mr. Foe.
So through your worship, so staff are recommending potential changes in the process for how in camera meetings are recommended to be conducted. And recommending that the deputy mayor chair in camera sessions, this provides more opportunity for the deputy mayor to chair meetings involving members of council and to gain experience in chairing on a more regular basis. Having the deputy mayor chair these meetings also makes it more obvious to members of the public that council is going to be moving into an in-camera session. With respect to reporting out following an in-camera meeting, the clerk or the deputy clerk in the clerk's absence, absence completes the reporting out and they do that following at the next regular council meetings. We would have committee of the whole and then a regular council meeting. And staff are recommending that the deputy mayor complete the reporting out as they will be chairing the meeting. Staff are also exploring having this completed following adjournment of the in-camera session. So again, returning to the open committee of the whole meeting instead of at a regular council meeting. The intent is to streamline the process and make it easier for members of the public to find all of the information that is completed in open in one place. The only thing I would note is that any resolutions or bylaws that would be required, following direction given at an in-camera session would still be required to be completed at a regular council meeting because currently committee of the whole doesn't have authority to make final decisions. So that would still be completed at regular council. Unless, as we complete our review, staff determine a, a more efficient process and then we would recommend that towards the new council.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Gaffey and councillor Henderson.
Through your worship.
Go ahead.
Councillor Gaffey, your sound is very low. A little bit, but it's very muffled.
Right, thank you. Councillor Henderson.
Well, I understand what you're saying in one part, but what I don't understand is, so what you're saying is like how we do it right now is we have the committee of the whole usually before council. So follow, take me through the step that's gonna happen now instead. Like, we're gonna have the committee of the whole, the deputy mayor chairs it. And then, like you're saying, we come out of the committee hole, but we go back in? I don't understand that part, sorry.
Mr. Foe.
So through you, your worship, to clarify, so the broad intent would be to streamline the process. So the meeting would start in committee of the whole open and the sole item considered to be a resolution to adjourn to a closed session. If a resolution was adopted, we would then move to a closed session, which does not have members of the public. We would have the in-camera meeting. And then following a German of in-camera, the recommendation would then be to come back out into committee of the whole open and at that meeting is where we would stay at the in-camera session, the following items were considered. And then we would, my intent would be to expand on the direction given. So for example, we could provide that direction was given to the city clerk to prepare a bylaw for the following regular council agenda. So these are some of the changes that we would be recommending. And again, the whole intent of this motion is to recommend and refer to the new term of council and also get their input and see if there are any further enhancements or review they would like staff to undertake.
So it would be when it's listed, it wouldn't be would it still be in our minutes like the regular council has, or will it be a separate meeting?
So through you, your worship, this would all be within the committee of the whole open portion session minutes. And the only items that would then go to a regular meeting would be the resolutions or bylaws that would be required to be adopted. And that would be contained within the regular council meeting minutes.
Councillor Clifford.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the clerk, in the report we got, it did talk about when a councillor is appointed to an outside like, seed core or, or festival hydro. We've always done that in camera and I got the impression from the report that they weren't happy with that. Will that be changed now when we're discussing what appointments councillors will have, or for that matter, people in the public that will be appointed, will it be in, in camera or they discussed an open council? I'm just curious about that after reading the report.
Mr. Foe.
So through you, your worship. So if the matter is discussing personal matters about identifiable individuals, that conversation needs to incur in camera because you are disclosing personal information about a person, which shouldn't be an open session. However, we are reviewing our current process for appointments to advisory committees and local boards for both members of council and citizens. And the goal will be to complete as much as possible in open session and then being really mindful of the exemptions and ensuring that we are following section two thirty-nine and that if there is something that should be considered in camera, such as personal matters about identifiable identifiable individual, that it'll be done so. But again, the intent would be to keep, especially for the council appointments, as much as possible in open session for members of the public.
Councillor Vassalakos.
I had a question around, there, there is sometimes in the procedural bylaw, the opportunity to go into closed, if you're an open session at a council meeting and something comes up that requires going into closed during that discussion. Would then the process be that then it goes into a closed session of council or does that then become committee? Like, this is where I'm, I mean, not that it matters, it's for the next council to, to sort through. But I'm wondering what the process then becomes for going into a closed session as it gets encountered during the council.
Mr. Foe.
So through your worship, so the intent for staff in reviewing the procedural bylaw would be to outline and streamline these processes so that if we were in regular council of motion to adjourn to a closed meeting for a specific matter in compliance with what is required to be contained in a resolution, could be adopted and then you would proceed into closed session. Consider that matter and then when you would adjourn, you'd be coming back into the regular council meeting or special council meeting, depending on where we need to adjourn, if that makes sense and is clear.
Anyone else? Councillor Henderson, I see you.
I was wondering if we were going to appeal some of these items, because, okay, I'll take one, for example, like, senior of the year. We do have a discussion about several different people and how old they are and what all they do. And what I read in his report is he, he didn't feel that should be in camera. And yet, how can you possibly basically have a surprise for somebody that's gonna get the senior of the year award and you're having those discussions? I'm not sure how we would do that. Is it just something we need to add, like maybe ahead of time, we have to put in somebody's name and their phone number, just so that it covers what he was saying, that it has to have a phone number or an address or something that discloses private information?
Mr. Foe.
So through you, your worship, in reviewing items such as that, my recommendation and, and what I have been kind of reviewing from other municipalities is actually soliciting applications for senior of the year award. And that way we would get applications from members of the public and then because it would then be personal information that we would be collecting, then you could have that considered enclosed. However, there may be times where it can be considered an open, for example, if there is only one application, then perhaps you know, we start in clothes and if there needs to be a discussion about personal matters, then do a motion to adjourn to a, a closed session. But staff are reviewing all of this and we're gonna be preparing some additional recommendations for how we complete certain processes going forward and getting some feedback, especially from the new term of council.
All right, anything, councillor Henderson?
I'm just following up. I just found it interesting because I went on several other municipalities and a lot of them just have like one line. And others have maybe have two lines and then there's others that have a bit more information, but what we've been putting out there, it seems like we have more than other municipalities do it. Um, I just wondered when, you know, that these investigators are looking into this. Um, I guess they only do it if they receive a complaint from the public. Instead of looking at all the municipalities to see if they're all doing it, how they feel they should be doing it. Like, I was surprised by the report, by how they felt certain things. I know some of them were maybe a coding issue, right, but I'm glad to hear we're gonna be looking into it. Thank you. Because it's not like, like I was shocked because I don't feel like we're trying to hide things from the public, so.
Thank you. All right, anything further? We have a mover and a seconder, I just want to confirm with the clerk.
Through your worship, yes, the motion was moved by councillor Vassalakos and seconded by councillor Ingram.
Thank you. If there's nothing further, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, any? And that's carried. Thank you.
Item eight is business for which previous notice has been given and there is none scheduled. So moving to item nine, reports to standing committees, there are no standing committee reports to be considered at this meeting. Item ten is notice intent and there was none scheduled. Moving to item eleven, reading of the bylaws, and there are nine bylaws listed as follows. Eleven point one is the municipal access agreement with Zayo Canada Inc. Eleven point two is to an accepted transfers from CNA Real Estate Development of part one on plan forty-four R dash six zero four one. Item eleven point three is dedication of part one on plan forty-four R dash six zero four one as public highway forming part of Brandt Street. Item eleven point four is an acceptance of proposal for the Dunn's Bridge Rehabilitation Consulting Services. Item eleven point five is to repeal bylaw ninety dash two thousand and twenty-two. Item eleven point six is to an acceptance and a transfer from Jim Van S of part three, plan forty-four R dash six zero three four. Item eleven point seven is dedication of part three, plan forty-four R dash six zero three four as public highway forming part of line twenty-nine. Eleven point eight is to award the tender for the McCarthy Road Extension. And item eleven point nine is to amend the procedural bylaw to amend the date of the inaugural council meeting. And these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council present.
Moving that they be taken collectively, councillor Ingram and councillor Bunting. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous, so we'll go to first and second reading. Moved by councillor Henderson and councillor Burbak, the bylaws eleven, one through nine be read first and second time. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Third and final reading. Councillor Clifford and councillor Vassalakos, moving the bylaws eleven, one through nine be read a third and final time. All those in favor? Opposed, any? And that's carried.
Item twelve is a consent agenda. Are there any items listed on the consent agenda to be considered by council?
Councillor Vassalakos and councillor Burbak.
Item one eighteen, which is the childcare resolution from sorry, from East Paris, I'd like to support their resolution.
So make a motion to support, seconded by councillor Burbak. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, any? That's carried. Councillor Burbak, did you have another item? Yes.
No, it was the same item. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further then? Do we have any new business this evening? Councillor Ingram.
Thank you. So it's, it's my final opportunity to bring some positive words about our staff. And I do have a number of, I have, I think, five that I'd like to speak to tonight and I, I know there's a number of other groups and staff that I haven't had the opportunity to, but tonight I'm gonna start off with our clerk's team. So Mr. Foe, Mr. Bantock and, and their team. They just completed an election and for members of the public who have never seen the amount of work that goes into preparing for election and running an election, it went incredibly smoothly for the city of Stratford. So I, I just wanted to say thank you to the, the clerk's team for all of their work and the time and the effort spent making sure that that ran smoothly and we had no hiccups all the way through. Secondly, I'd like to speak to our IT team. Our IT team was also instrumental in making sure that the election went incredibly smoothly because of course, we're doing it all digitally. But also our IT team worked incredibly hard when we had our ransomware attack. They they jumped right into it and I don't think they got a lot, a lot of credit for all of the work and the time and the effort that they put into making sure that our information was safe and that the city was able to still function and move forward. So thank you to Naim and all members of our IT's team. Certainly, I'd like to speak to our finance team. So Ms. Kruger and Mr. Steckley and their team, they are a small but mighty little finance team within the city. They do a ton of work and they were, they were dragged through the mud recently a little bit and they don't deserve that. They do a great job. They're wonderful people and I think, you know, for members of the public, we have to remember that all of these staff members are also people and they have family and they have friends and they are in the community just the same as you and I are. So they, they are people and they're doing their job to the best of their abilities and they're very professional while they do it. And so thank you to Ms. Kruger and, and your team. Um, fourth, Mr. Bytes, our, our communication specialist. He, as I said in one of our in one of my recent interviews with, I think it was Stratford Times. Having his position created during my time on council was one of the best decisions I think we have made. We made a lot of really good ones, but, but he's one of the best ones. He does a fantastic job at communicating. He has made the connection between members of the public and staff and members of the public and council, just so smooth and effortless. And he gets information out that otherwise wouldn't be communicated. just so smooth and effortless and he gets information out that otherwise wouldn't be communicated. So thank you to Mister Bytes for all that you do for the city. And then lastly, our CIO, to Ms. Thompson. Again, a really great decision that we made while while I've been on council. She she is the utmost professional. If you have ever had the chance to speak to her, she takes her time, her, she is so thought conscientious and so knowledgeable. I don't think the city would run nearly as effectively as it does if she wasn't in the position that she's in. So thank you to Ms. Thompson for everything that you do for the city.
Thanks, Counselor Ingram. All right, is there any other new business? If not, I I'm going to give each member of council a chance to just reflect and say a few words. And Counselor Vasilakos, would you to lead us off?
Thank you. First of all, I echo everything that Danielle just said about city staff. I'm going to start by saying thank you to Mayor Matheson and my fellow council colleagues. I am really proud of the work that we've done over the last eight years and I think we've done a lot of really good things for the city. And I think there's a lot of things, a lot of projects that that we've started, finished and are in the middle of that really will take our community into the future. I want to say to our community that it's been an honor to serve for the last eight years. It is a highlight of my, you know, working life. And city staff, I just want to say what a pleasure it's been working with you. I want to thank you both, both for your professionalism and for your patience that you have shown over the last eight years. It really, really has been a pleasure working with all of you. And to the new council, I just want to wish you all the best. It is a really great opportunity that you have to serve your community and I look forward to seeing all of the wonderful things that you do. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Counselor Vasilakos. Counselor Gaffney.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Good, just had to change the technology. Thanks for this opportunity, your worship. Approximately twenty years ago, I, after spending a few years establishing myself in our business and in the community, I decided at one point to that it was time to give something back to the community. So at that time I signed up for some advisory committees and boards. I was on energy and environment and border park management. And and then at some point, I, before the two thousand and six election, I approached Dan Matheson and Chris Stricker didn't in the boards had one Tuesday night at wing night. And I asked them if there was a a possibility or that I should show some interest in running for city council. And with their encouragement and direction, I did that. So in two thousand and six, I first got elected to to serve the city of Stratford as a member of city council and stayed on the parks board. I became one of the boards I joined as a city council was the Stratford District Agricultural Society and sixteen years later, I'm still still participating in that and then I was off for a couple of terms and I was back on and here I am looking at the outside of the door again, so it's been quite an experience. And over these twenty years, I've served with an awful lot of good people. I've had some pretty fantastic mentors. And I want to mention a few of them here. Counselor Hunt. Counselor Paul Nickel. E S Ted Bowles, a lot of talks when we went away to conferences with that guy, taught me an awful lot. And of course, I have to mention my good friend. Counselor Clifford, he's he's given me all kinds of encouragement and direction over the years and I've got to say, I loved serving the people of Stratford. So thanks, everybody.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gaffney. Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to all of my fellow council members. The last eight years have really kind of flown by, to be honest with you, other than maybe this pandemic seems to be going through. Outside of that, the the past eight years have been, they've been fun. It's been exciting. We've made lots of progress. I'm excited to see where the next council is going to take the city of Stratford. So to everybody that's remaining and all the new incoming council members, I wish you all the best and I look forward to seeing what you're going to be doing. I won't be disappearing, so to to all of staff, I do have your emails. And I just, I thought I would finish with a a quick little joke. So Mariah Carey is opening her Christmas present. Inside, she finds a deed to an undeveloped plot of land that is owned residential. Disappointed, she sets down the deed and says, I don't want a lot for Christmas. Good luck, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Ingram. Counselor Seven.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't I guess I'm not a lot of words right now, but I just want to say, you know, I've been glad to to serve on council for the last four years and I'm I'm looking forward to the term ahead, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Seven. Counselor Henderson. Bonnie, can you unmute yourself, please?
Oh, sorry, I thought I did. Thank you for your help. Over the last sixteen years, I've seen many changes. I've worked with many different counselors. I've seen great improvement to our city through communication and management, Mike. Housing, and I know we still need a lot more housing, but we have a lot more than when I got on sixteen years ago. And accessibility has improved with sidewalks and the ramps and even our memorial gardens now is accessible, so the city's been fantastic to work with on all of these projects. But having said that, I'm going to really miss, and I'm going to do this in alphabetical order because Dan, Danielle, Dave, Graham, Kathy and Tom and, did I say Dave? Yes, Dave. I'm going to miss working with you all. We've been a really great council and I've been with Dan right from the beginning. And he has supported me, called me and talked me about issues and I'm going to miss him a lot and our city, I know he'll still stay active because it's just in his genes. You know, he just cares so much about our city. And he's done so much for our city, the things that he's brought to our city. I know council worked with him, but I know he was out there digging for it, going and visiting with the ministers and whether it's provincial or federal and but anyway, I'm just going to really miss you all and I'm I'm looking forward to working with the new council. I mean, some of us will be there, Martin and Brad and Cody, Jody and myself. I hope some of you have joined committees or rostered joining committees, so still keep in touch. Anyway, that's all I really want to say.
Counselor Clifford.
Thank you, your worship. When when I got on council, I've I've been on council twenty-five years and I told my wife I was going to I was going to, I was going to try for council and 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 Heather said, well, there's a lot of speaking and I said, oh, well. But and it it's not, I apologize. It's been a pleasure and I I I've I've enjoyed all the councils, all the counselors. And I I want to thank the staff for all all the hard work the staff has done. Herr Matheson has been, he's been great. Herr Hunt was a great. He was a great mayor too, so it was a pleasure and I want to congratulate all the counselors that got back on. I I want to congratulate my friend, Steve Gaffney, I I just want to say he was, as all counselors, he was a great counselor. And he worked hard and I feel bad he's not on, but I mean, that that's life, so I I just I want to thank everybody. I want to thank my family for the, the help. And that's it, ma'am.
Thanks so much, Phil. Counselor Burbak.
A lot of people's sentiments to really thank staff. As a new counselor, it was really important to get up to speed quickly. And staff were certainly there to help with that process, but also my fellow counselors. And I want to especially thank everybody. I'm going to go in order, not alphabetical order, but in the order on my screen, so doesn't probably make any sense, but I really want to thank Graham and Tom and Danielle and Kathy and Dave, who aren't going to be joining us, but really experienced counselors who were able to always talk through issues and, you know, it's it's not an easy job being a counselor. It's there's, it's rewarding, it's challenging, it's not easy. And I I think especially this past term with the pandemic, it's been, it's been extra challenging, so I just, oh, and of course, Dan. Providing leadership for us and yeah, just leading us through a really challenging time. I really appreciate the your your obvious care for the city and and for council and yeah, just thank you, thank you all for your service. And yeah, I'm hoping that we'll be able, I'll be able to call on you for your expertise. Danielle for planning and Kathy for all things I T S and all kinds of other things. I just hoping that those resources are still there and that you don't mind me reaching out to you and I really appreciate your support and your your dedication and service to Stratford, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Jody. Counselor Beatty.
Good evening. First off, I I want to start with my colleagues. We're not returning and that and just some of my thoughts. Kathy, hi. Kathy and I, we we it it was the magic moment is is when Kathy and I would look across the room and you knew that if we were both in support of something, that it was a great thing for Stratford. We we butted heads many times, but I always liked when we would look across the room and there was that smile and it was the aha, we've got it. And Kathy, I appreciate those moments. So those are something that I'll always remember, might take away with you. Daniel, I've loved what you've brought to council or council a bit and celebrating the successes. It's been fantastic to recognize the great works of of our staff. I loved it and it's something that I hope that we'll have the opportunity to continue because we need to recognize the great works that that go on because it's easy to to point at all the faults, but we need to to bring up and recognize these successes. So thank you for doing that. Tom Clifford, my goodness, we're going to miss your your sound and sage advice. You're so much history that you brought to the table. So much that you were able to coach and mentor for us as we came up as council. Thank you so much for everything you do for our city and I know that this will continue in our community after you leave today. Dave Gaffney, brother. Bleeds Stratford. I'm going to miss you. You're a great friend and colleague on council and I'll look forward to seeing you driving around town and and having a chance to to keep me informed on what's going on in the city. Graham Bunty. You were oh, I don't know where we'll go for candy. Who who's going to, who's going to keep us in candy during council and and bring a smile and a laugh? You were without a doubt the person who who were, who is quick with the, quick with the wit and to make us smile and to make us know that that council is business, but that we can, that we can have fun while we're at it. Thank you for for ensuring that we we had that as part of our council. To everyone else, I, to Bonnie, Jody, Cody. Counselor or Mayor-elect Ritzma, looking forward to continuing to work with you over the next four years. Dan, Mayor Matheson. Only words I can say. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much, Brett. Counselor Bunty.
There's always a problem with being one of the last ones to talk because everything's been said so far. But I would like to start by saying it's been an honor and a privilege to observe the citizens of Stratford for the past eight years. For those who voted for me, thank you. For those who didn't vote for me but voted, thank you for exercising your right to vote. Both, both councils I've served on have have been comprised of eleven diverse individuals from different backgrounds and experiences, different knowledge. And we all looked at the world with our own lenses. We didn't always agree on the many topics and situations we were presented with, but once the vote was in, it was on to the next decision. I'm very proud of the achievements that we have made. I'm not going to list them because there are quite a few of them, but over the last two terms, we have done a lot. And we should all be proud of that. I would like to thank all city staff, in particular the corporate leadership team, and you know who you are. I would like to thank their managers, I thank their managers for their dedication to work and for their cooperation with council and for sharing their knowledge, expertise and guidance with us. In closing, I'd like to wish our new council all the very best for the next four years. I wish you all smooth sailing and hopefully not too many choppy seas in your future. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Pam. Counselor Ritzma.
So I'll begin by thanking all council and staff for their work and commitment over the past four years, this past term. I don't know where this term has gone. I don't know where the twelve years have gone, but you know, with the challenges of COVID and and the notorious challenges of the elevator, it really brought to light what a tremendous team we had that we were able to pull together as as council, as staff and navigate those choppy waters as Graham was just alluding to. So that's my first start point to say thank you very much to all council, to all staff that work and take what we do so seriously and are committed to do the very best for the residents of Stratford. A huge and special thanks to Counselor Vasilakos, Ingram, Gaffney, Bunty and Clifford. It will be so different not seeing your names in minutes on the screen. And certainly, over the last couple of weeks, I've been able to be in council chambers and not to see your names on council, in council chambers' desks. That'll be a a real difference. I'll certainly miss the candy and I'll certainly miss Tom Clifford's intro line to all my, I was just going to ask and I'll miss that for sure, Tom. To Mayor Matheson. It's funny you mentioned it tonight. You mentioned the number four thousand seven hundred and four and and earlier today I was writing a few notes and I and I looked at the agenda and I thought to myself, I'm wondering how many of those meetings and perhaps you'll share that with us. and I looked at the agenda and I thought to myself, I'm wondering how many of those meetings, and perhaps you'll share that with us, you were part of. So on a personal note, thank you for guidance, your mentorship. It's meant a great deal to me. You are personally have been a real support for myself in the role as as a councillor. On behalf of the residents of Stratford and and the city staff, thank you so very much for for your service over the past twenty-seven years, nineteen as our mayor, your leadership, your dedication to the city. I certainly wish you ever success, Dan. I know you're not going far, but certainly ever success as you seek and explore new horizons in your future. So thank you ever so much.
Thanks so much, Martin. Well, it's it's a privilege for me to, of course, say thank you to all of you, my council colleagues. You know, for Tom, who I started serving with in the nineties and and others that I've known in the community and then have served two and three and four and five terms with. I can't thank you enough. It is sometimes a lonely job as a council member because you're on the end of a ten-one vote or you're on the end of a nine-two vote or an eight-three. But I think the resilience of all of us to pick ourselves up and dust ourselves off and to keep moving forward in a progressive and positive way is exemplifies what it is to be a public servant and all of you have done it. And I know that it's been without tool, it's been with much tool on your family and personal time. And sometimes vitriol and in social media and other places make it tough. But you've always rose above and shone, and I want to thank you all for that. I it has been an incredible ride for me. At Martin, you've touched on it. It's been over a thousand council meetings that I've sat in since the spring of nineteen ninety-five. And I've chaired about six hundred and sixty, some of them from quick calculation because I pulled the minutes of my first council meeting as a member of council and I pulled one as the first one as mayor. And over that time, I have served with incredible group of people, thirty-three different members of council and two other mayors, and it has been a real honor. And I would say to the ten of you that I put you up against any of the other thirty-three because every one of you, I brought the right perspective to council and that was that you did it because you cared and loved for your community. And thank you. I had the opportunity today to have my kids decorate the Christmas tree one last time at City Hall, which they have done since they were three and one. And if you've ever seen a twenty-three and a twenty-year-old along with some Pat and the city staff, it was quite humorous to have them back in the office one last time today. And it was a great time for Carolyn and I and the kids to reminisce about the journey we've been on and we've been honored as a family. It's been a true honor for us to to be part of the leadership of this community and to work on behalf of our fellow residents. Well, from Carolyn, nine, the children, thank you. I think you all know that in our office, in the mayor's office, there are five dedicated people. There's Joan Thompson, our chief administrative officer, who is an exceptional professional who I've had the privilege of serving with from day one along with Charlene Weber, who has been there since day one in the clerk's office when I came to City Hall. Joan, thank you for all you've done for the city. You continue to personify excellence, humility and grace, and your integrity is impeccable. So thank you. To Charlene, thank you for all you've done. You have been that stalwart, always making sure that trains run on time and the documents where they're supposed to be. And she's been supported by Stephanie Potter, our research assistant, who does a lot of the background work and research for us as we as council and the city send off reports and requests to senior levels of government and request meetings. And she coordinates a lot of our efforts with our outside partners. Mike Bytes, our communications manager, who is someone who, again, I've known from the start and coming from the media and a crossover. Mike is a very diligent individual who works tirelessly to provide answers to the community and to make sure he does so in a timely manner. And Mike has done yeoman's work and the pandemic has of course added to that. And I know that it has made communications even more important. Lastly, to my assistant, Pat Shance. I don't know what else to say. What an incredible person who has been with me from day one, who also is retiring today from the city. And Pat has been for all of us, all the council members that have served her point of contact. And she is someone with great, great love for the city. She makes so much happen here. And I think we all owe her a huge debt of gratitude. And I know that I wish her nothing but the happiness as she heads to retirement. To Ms. Tachiana Defoe and Chris Bandtak in the clerk's office, I wish you all the best as you continue to keep records and of course coordinate so much of what we do here in the city and to our corporate leadership team. You all have such an incredible amount of work to do as we continue to deal with not only financial challenges, social and mental health challenges, infrastructure, and of course, setting our city up for the great course that it's on for the next ten, twenty and beyond. So to all of you, thank you. It has been my privilege to serve with you and serve for you. And on behalf of my family, I want to thank them, Carolyn and the kids and my extended family and friends for all their love and support. And with that, I'm going to say good night and thank you to you all. And I wish everyone much health and happiness now and forever. And I'll take the last motion to adjourn. Counselor Ingram and Counselor Clifford. Do we need a recorded vote? Are we okay with this? All right, all those in favor. All right, Carrie, thank you, everyone. Stay well.
Is there not a confirmatory bylaw?
Counselor Gaffney, you got me. The clerk's sitting there looking at me too. I think she was waving at me, but I thought she was just thankful I mentioned your name. We'll we'll hold that adjournment motion for one second. Mr. Defoe, we're going to take the confirmatory bylaw. Eleven-ten, first and second reading. Counselor Gaffney, why don't you move that? All right, second by Counselor Vasilakos. All those in favor. That's carried and third and final. And I see Ms. Thompson off the side here, Counselor Beatty and Counselor Burbak. All those in favor. And before I take that motion, Jurn, I have one more important person waving at me, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just before you have the last word, I just would like to take an opportunity to to address council. So on behalf of the city of Stratford employees, I want to thank this council for your dedicated service to this city. During this term of council, under your stewardship, you have made important decisions. And these are just a few. Community transportation pilot project. You you had the the leadership and the vision to to see that that was a needed service. The Huron Street and Ontario Street Connecting Link Highway improvements. Investment in tourism with the grand official opening of the Tom Patterson Theater. Comprehensive zoning bylaw review. Support for needed new affordable housing units. Embracing diversity, inclusiveness, accessibility and equity. New critical infrastructure such as the Queen Street Trunk Sewer, which is one of the last remaining large projects in that master plan from way back in two thousand and four. Construction of the Crane Avenue Business Park for business attraction and retention. Demolition Control Bylaw. The Private Tree Bylaw. Advancement of the Bike and Trails Master Plan. And committing this city to our climate change initiatives. These and the other decisions council made together will have long ranging benefits to make this community a better place for everyone and to be the best place to live, work and play. The majority of your council term was conducted during the COVID-19 pandemic. This required you as council to adapt, pivot and be creative in responding to provincial and public health mandates and in supporting this community with specific initiatives to address the many needs of residents and businesses. Your knowledge and experience in governing the city was especially evident during the pandemic, enabling this council to make strategic decisions when the future was so very unpredictable. Thank you to you and your family and friends for their support of your municipal government service. This required time away from them while you attended municipal events, Monday night council meetings. You did your council meeting prep work and then meeting with constituents. Thank you for your support, your dedication and commitment to the city of Stratford. And we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. We know that you will be very much involved in this community. Thank you.
Thanks so much. All right, we're going to go back to that vote on the adjournment. All those in favor. All right, thank you so much, everyone. Have a good evening. Take care.
Hey, stay safe, everyone.